All right, just a couple of housekeeping matters before we get rolling. Parking validation, anyone who's parking for this meeting or using the bus can pick up passes from security on the way now, it will be valid for today only. To share with my commissioners, in accordance with the code of ethics adopted by the board, all county commissioners have a duty to obey all applicable laws regarding official actions, uphold the integrity and independence of the office, to avoid impropriety in the exercise of official duties, to faithfully perform the duties of the office, and to conduct the affairs of the governing board in an open and public manner. Is there any item on the agenda the outcome of which will have a direct, substantial, and readily identifiable financial impact for any Buncombe County Board member? Seeing none, also, does any Board member have any financial interest in any public contract coming before the Board today? There being none, all Board members have a duty and obligation to vote. Before we get to the consent agenda, there is one matter that came up during briefing that I think we'd like to go ahead and make a motion on right now. Commissioner Wells?
Yes, thank you. I'd like to make a motion that we add the letter of support for the Healthy Opportunities Program.
We have a motion, thank you.
Awesome.
Motion in a second, any discussion on that addition?
Could we make, on your motion, could you, are you wanting to add that to new business, the consent agenda, where, if you could be, thank you.
New business, yes, new business.
All right, for clarification in new business, thank you Kurt. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Fantastic. Any other adjustments to the meeting proper before we go to the consent agenda? All right, has everyone had a moment to review the consent agenda? If so, I will accept the motion. Thank you, Commissioner Whitesides. Second, thank you, Commissioner Horton. Any discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Fantastic. I would like to make one final motion, just we have two proclamations that are on the list right now, I would move that we go ahead and move those proclamations to right before public comment in the interest of taking care of the folks who are here to read them or accept them. Any objections to that? Not, I will make a motion to that effect.
Second.
Thank you, I think it's kind of a tie. For Commissioner Whitesides, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Fantastic. We'll take those proclamations, beginning with the proclamation acknowledging Independent Retailer Month that will be read by Commissioner Drew Ball and accepted by Rebecca with the Merchants of Downtown Asheville. Thank you for joining us Rebecca.
County Buncombe proclamation, whereas Buncombe County is proud to join the Asheville Downtown Association, Explore Asheville, Go Local Asheville, Historic Biltmore Village Association, Merchants of Downtown Asheville, River Arts District Artists, and West Asheville Business Association, and the City of Asheville in supporting and celebrating Asheville's local independent retailers and the positive impact they have on the city's culture, economy, and character, and whereas Independent Retailer Month provides a time to celebrate the independence of the people of our community and the entrepreneurial spirit represented by our local independent retailers, and whereas the individual decisions we make today shape the future of our communities, and whereas local independent retailers help preserve the uniqueness of Asheville and give us a sense of place, and whereas independently owned retailers give back to our communities in goods, services, jobs, time, and talent, and whereas the health of our community and that of each community depends on our support of businesses owned by our friends and neighbors, and whereas independent retailer owners and employees enrich our purchasing experiences with their knowledge and passion, and whereas we acknowledge that the well-being of all our communities lies within each of us. Now therefore be it resolved that the Buncombe County Board of Commissioners recognizes July as Independent Retailer Month in Buncombe County, and salute our citizens and local independent retailers who are integral to the unique flavor of our city and county, and honor their efforts to make our community the place we want to live and work. In witness thereof, I have hereunto set my hand and cause the seal of Buncombe County to be affixed this 15th day of July, signed by our Chair Amanda Edwards, and as a note of personal privilege, my first job was at an independent retailer at a skate shop in my hometown of Kernersville, so kudos to our independent retailers and thank you for being here to receive this.
That's all right. Thank you Rebecca and Commissioner Ball. All right, we have a second proclamation, this one will be accepted by Allison Danes and read by our own Commissioner Sloan.
Parks and Rec, what would my kids do in the summer without Parks and Rec? Whereas Parks and Recreation is an integral part of communities throughout this country, including Buncombe County, and whereas Parks and Recreation promotes health and wellness, improving the physical and mental health of people who utilize parks, and whereas Parks and Recreation promotes time spent in nature, mental health and well-being, social interaction, and enhanced self-esteem through events and programs like fishing clubs, hikes, and campouts. And whereas Parks and Recreation encourages physical activities by providing space for popular sports, hiking trails, swimming pools, greenways, and many other activities designed to promote active lifestyles, and whereas Buncombe County offers river parks, sports complexes, and natural areas that ensure the ecological beauty of our community and allow residents to gather, celebrate, connect with nature, and recreate. And whereas Buncombe County Parks and Recreation staff and partners have worked to reopen and revive parks that were impacted by Tropical Storm Helene, removing countless downed trees and thousands of pounds of debris, repairing structures and restoring damaged environments. And whereas our parks played a critical role as community hubs and community care stations during recovery efforts, and Parks and Recreation staff served in vital positions during storm response. And whereas our residents have communicated the importance of our green spaces through a profound desire for storm-impacted parks to be rebuilt, and whereas the United States' House of Representatives has designated July as Parks and Recreation Month, and whereas Buncombe County recognizes the benefits derived from Parks and Recreation resources. Now therefore, the Buncombe County Board of Commissioners hereby proclaim July as Parks and Recreation Month in Buncombe County, and we urge our residents to get outside, connect with nature, and visit our parks, exclamation point, this day, the 15th of July.
Thank you Commissioners, I am Joseph Guzman, Project Manager with Buncombe County Parks and Recreation. I'm filling in today for Allison Danes who sadly is out sick. On behalf of our entire Parks and Recreation team, I want to sincerely thank you for this proclamation recognizing July as Parks and Recreation Month. Your continued support affirms the value of work we do every day to provide safe, welcoming, and vibrant spaces for all residents. This recognition honors not only our staff and volunteers, but also all the community members who engage with our parks, greenways, and recreation programs throughout the year. Parks and Recreation is essential to building strong, healthy, and connected communities. From providing access to outdoor recreation, environmental stewardship, and wellness opportunities to offering inclusive programs for youth, seniors, families, our department plays a critical role in the quality of life for everyone in Buncombe County. Especially in the times of challenge and recovery, our parks serve as places of healing, gathering, and resilience. We are proud to serve this community, and we remain committed to ensuring that our parks and programs continue to grow, thrive, and reflect the needs of all who call this place home. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, and thank you to our entire Parks Department. Now the most exciting part of every meeting, public comment, see we have a good number of people with us today, and thank you for being present. Just going to share a couple of housekeeping matters on this, the time limit for individual comments of the Board is three minutes. If you don't mind, please state your name before speaking. If your time expires and you have any questions, you can leave them with our clerk, along with your name, address, and phone number, with the county manager or clerk, I think it's actually you Sarah. Board members are not expected to comment on any matters during the public comment section, this is your chance to speak to us and make sure that you're heard. All public comments must be directed to the Board as a whole, not individual commissioners, staff, or audience members. Please no clapping or snapping, and the Board reserves the right to deny public address on any subject previously presented to the Board during the same meeting. In this case, we're going to have something that comes up, a group can elect one person to speak for 10 minutes if eight people in attendance relinquish their right to speak on that particular issue, just in the interest of time and having one effective advocate. I understand that might be the case here for a Mr. Jonathan Horton, is that right? All right, can you have those eight people just stand up, just so I can check that box? Wonderful, I can count at least the eight, so there we go. All right, we'll go ahead and call you up, one at a ti, I'm going to call two names at a time, the first will be the person speaking, second's just kind of on deck so we can make sure we hear from everyone efficiently. If I mispronounce your name, please correct me kindly, if you don't mind, and I will do the best I can to make sure we hear from everybody. Sound good? All right, let's start with Woody Davis and on deck Steve Arpin.
Hello, my name is Woody Davis, and like a lot of people here this evening, I'm here to talk about the UNCA Woods. You'll hear plenty from folks talking about all the reasons to save the woods, and there are many, but I'd like to take this time to talk about why we're here asking you for help. So first some background, in January, as heavy equipment rumbled through the woods, nestled in the quiet Five Points neighborhood, clearing paths and boring holes, a spokesman for the University of North Carolina Asheville who owns the land assured the public that no decisions would be made on the property, they were just evaluating. In March, Chancellor Van Nort admitted that they were planning to develop the woods, but said that so far, no decisions have been finalized regarding how we would develop this or any other undeveloped property. Community input sessions were promised, and they turned out to be a farce. The university turned away dozens at the door and only gave 30 people the chance to speak. Those speakers were unanimously against destroying the woods. And in June, when the university finally announced their plans, replacing the woods with a sports stadium, retail, and market rate housing, all owned and run by the private sector, they said that the university will provide opportunities to university, alumni, and local and regional community members to share their thoughts on the proposed plan. But last Friday, before those opportunities materialized, UNCA's Board of Trustees approved a 99-year ground lease with a stadium developer from Ohio, a developer that set up a North Carolina corporation called Asheville Stadium District Real Estate Project LLC in an apparent anticipation of this very project in November of last year. At each stage in this process, the university has chosen to be evasive, opaque, and just plain dishonest. By all appearances, a decision was made about what they wanted to do no later than November of last year, and they have spent the intervening months publicly lying about it while working to push it through behind closed doors, showing no interest in building buy-in or even bothering to defend the proposal to the people it would most affect. I want to pause here because it really is a remarkable fact. A public institution founded with public money and situated on public land now treats the public it is supposed to serve with contempt, creating destructive, unpopular plans behind closed doors, and even now refusing to share key details around how this plan would work. Confronting the appalling reality that the university now views the people of Buncombe County as nothing more than inconveniences to their real estate schemes, many are feeling bewildered and betrayed, and wondering who or what can speak up for their interests against a school that no longer seems concerned with its relationship to the community it ostensibly serves. And so that's why we're here, asking you, as our elected representatives, to help us stand up against this development, both by signaling your opposition through a resolution and by helping us find different outcomes that can strengthen the university and benefit Buncombe County without destroying a priceless natural resource, outcomes like a land swap, a conservancy, or a public forest. So I want to thank you, those of you on the commission who have already signaled your support and spoken out against this travesty, we're very grateful for everything you've done, and we're excited to keep working with this Board to save this crucial urban forest. Thank you.
All right, we have Steve Arpin up next, and Dennis Ash, and just in the interest, I know it's exciting to clap, just for consistency of rules, I have to go ahead and enforce that one. Mulligan for the first.
Hi, my name is Steve Arpin. To me, what we're dealing with here is something that everyone's opposed to, it's bad for the university, it's bad for the people who live around there, we just heard the people, you know, when the proclamation for Parks and Recreation talk about the benefit of natural areas for people's mental health, and, you know, all sorts of benefits to the community, those same arguments apply to what we're talking about here with saving this woods. No one, if any of us had a house, I don't have a house right near there, if any of us had a house bordering this and were told that they were going to put in a 5,000-seat stadium with who knows what at night, the lighting, the noise, none of us would want this. This is against everyone, the university is not benefiting from this. And so my point is that it's bad for everyone, and one other thing I wanted to mention, and I don't know the full legalities of this, but I have been told that the state legislature made some rules for Buncombe County and Metaga County, I mean, I've read the Constitution over and over again, and I've read for layperson a fair amount about laws, I don't understand how you can do anything involved with the law that is not applied equally to everyone. To me, this needs to be challenged in court, and I don't think it would stand up. Those are my two points, thank you.
Thank you. All right. Dennis Ash is up next, and Chris Cateta, sorry. Gracias. Sir.
For over 20 years, I have enjoyed being a neighbor of UNC Asheville, attending concerts, plays, and lectures on its campus. My greatest enjoyment has come from walking every day along the trails in the wonderful woods across from the main campus with my partner Sarah and our dog. We have come to know many of our neighbors on these walks. The woods are also a haven for wildlife, but they took a terrible hit from Tropical Storm Helene, dozens of trees were blown down. Astonishingly, the resident great horned owls continued calling to each other right after the storm subsided. They never left, they were determined to raise their young in these woods as they have done for many years. This spring, they successfully brought a new chick into the woods, it's the perfect place for them and the magnificent piliated woodpeckers who had to start a new home after their old tree blew down. Because of these birds, I realize that after Helene, that the woods are still very much alive, and I hope they can be restored and brought further to life. At a time when UNCA is determined to destroy the woods and every living thing in them, I want to propose an alternative vision. The woods could become not only a forest preserve, but a center for connection for all living, all of us living in Asheville and Buncombe County. Professors and students who are already using the woods as a living classroom could develop a plan to restore the woods and turn them into an asset the university would be proud of. Now is a good time to start by eradicating invasive plants and replacing them with native species. Members of the local community could volunteer to work under the direction of UNCA forest experts. Children from neighboring city and county schools could make working in the woods part of their regular curriculum. There could also be an important role for students from the university, acting as mentors for these young people. I can imagine a multi-generational enterprise lasting perhaps for generations to come. The development plan I've outlined for the woods at UNCA would be very attractive to major donors, environmental organizations would support the effort, millions of dollars could pour into the university's coffers. This project could become widely known and attract many local students and others from further afield. It certainly would make UNCA distinct in its commitment to conservation and opportunities for real-life education, experiential learning, and community indication. I urge UNCA to imagine the possibilities, together let's grow the woods into a beautifully connected space treasured by the local community and valued as an enduring legacy for the community.
Come on up Chris, thank you, and Jonathan, you're up next.
My name is Chris Cateta, I am the President of the Five Points Neighborhood Association, and I thank you for the opportunity to speak today. I'm here to urge you to reject UNCA's proposed plan to construct a 5,000-seat soccer stadium in the Five Points neighborhood. I know the plan is not for you to approve, but I call on this commission to publish a resolution opposing this development. Let me tell you why. Of the many reasons to oppose this development, I want to focus on the economic viability of this proposal. Since UNCA is asking for $29 million in public funding, I believe this plan should meet with heavy public scrutiny to ensure it is a good use of taxpayer dollars. However, UNCA has failed to provide any serious argument that a stadium would provide positive returns for taxpayers, and in fact, the overwhelming economic evidence would suggest otherwise. Decades of extensive research has shown that stadiums generally fail as economic development engines. The Cato Institute calls stadium subsidies political malpractice. The Federal Reserve Bank of St. Louis said that the idea that sports is a catalyst for economic development just doesn't hold water. Public financing for sports stadiums is almost always justified with rosy promises, extra jobs, more tourism, increased local spending, but these promises rarely if ever materialize. UNCA's own proposal contains a bold claim of $250 million in increased economic activity for Asheville, that's quite a return for a mere $29 million investment, but curiously, UNCA does not provide any detail as to how this number was derived. What makes these astronomical returns even less likely is the increasing competition for outdoor events like concerts. We're already funding McCormick Field renovations to the tune of nearly $40 million, setting up McCormick to become the premier outdoor stadium venue in Asheville. Do we really need another one? A prominent local concert promoter also pointed out that we're seeing an explosion of state-of-the-art amphitheaters in cities all through the South that will also compete with Asheville for concerts. Combine that with the limitations of weather for an outdoor venue, as well as soccer schedules for four teams, and the promise of 90 non-soccer events per year seems more like a pipe dream than a realistic projection. But let's revisit the cost, is $29 million really the total cost to Asheville? I'm afraid that with stadiums, residents pay twice, first through public funding, and again through ongoing hidden expenses, quality of life reductions, and unmet community needs. A 2022 study by the Brookings Institution found that infrastructure costs like road repairs can add 25% to the public subsidy. What about additional police, emergency services, and sanitation required for large-scale events? What about traffic, noise, and lights? And that's assuming the initial cost estimate holds, which is exceedingly unlikely. Most stadium projects end up with cost overruns of 20, 50, even 70%. Take for example White Stadium in Boston, which I don't have time to talk about, but I want to call on this commission to oppose this development through a resolution. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, my name is Jonathan Horton, and I'm the Chair of the Biology Department at UNC Asheville, and I'm here to urge that the Buncombe County Commission take a stand against the soccer stadium, market value housing, and retail space being proposed for UNCA's urban forest. First, I'm opposed to the way this plan was developed, the chancellor's been less than transparent and in fact blatantly dishonest about this process. The local neighbors were abruptly disturbed in January when crews and track hoes appeared in the forest, clearing trails, drilling holes, and posting survey lines. I was bombarded with calls and emails when this began, asking what was going on, and I did not know. Like most faculty, staff, and students, I was not consulted in any plans for developing this forest, despite being on the UNCA Natural Areas Resource Advisory Committee and my 23-year history of teaching classes in botany, plant physiology, mycology, forest ecology, utilizing this forested space. The chancellor's dishonesty extended into her presentation to the Board of Governors where she said this area was unused. That's just not true. I and other faculty regularly use this area as an outdoor classroom and research space. The close proximity, in conjunction with the increasing difficulty of taking students off-campus, makes this an easily excess natural area, where we can engage students in hands-on high-impact activities that have been proven to enhance learning and increase retention, an issue that has plagued UNCA in recent years. Over the past 23 years, I and my colleagues have secured hundreds of thousands of dollars to fund research using this area. We've trained dozens of student researchers, and through developing course-based research experiences, commonly known as cures in the pedagogical literature, have used this natural area to provide hundreds, if not thousands, of students authentic research experiences. A lot of this work was based around community and ecosystem ecology, how the forest works, and how we can make it healthier, for example by managing invasive exotic species. With our class-based efforts, we were trying to address the issue of plant blindness, a tendency of people to overlook and underestimate the value of plants, and our efforts had significant impacts on student perceptions. We published our findings in scientific and pedagogical journals, and I'm sure that students will not get the same experience if they were to shop at the proposed retail or could afford to live in the proposed market value housing. If they're soccer fans, the current 3,000-seat soccer complex on campus is more than adequate for the hundreds of fans that regularly show up. I oppose this development because it is antithetical to the values that UNCA has espoused since my arrival in 2003, at least until the current administrations, UNCA, state, and federal, came into power. In 2021, UNCA signed a carbon commitment to become net carbon neutral by 2050, and in 2023, signed a climate action plan designating steps to achieve this. In summer 2021, several research students, led by Annalisa Keller and I, measured the trees in the urban forest to calculate their ecosystem services, such as carbon sequestration, water absorption, oxygen production. While the chancellor plays lip service to the establishment of green spaces, green spaces are not the same as functioning forests, and they do not perform the same ecosystem services. This roughly 45-acre forest had, before Helene, an estimated 91% canopy cover and close to 20,000 trees. These trees were estimated to contain over 3,500 tons of carbon and sequester 75 tons every year while producing 115 tons of oxygen and absorbing, avoiding runoff of 295,000 cubic feet of water, or 2.2 million gallons of water a year. After seeing the destructive power of water runoff from Helene, preserving forests like this should be a top priority. If cut, most of this stored carbon would return to the atmosphere, the sequestration would be lost, and runoff would increase, contributing to local flooding. In addition to these invaluable resources and services, this area provides habitat for wildlife, plants, and fungi, some rare, as well as a space for campus and community members to spend time in a forested ecosystem, an experience proven in many studies to be vital for mental health and well-being. Read Richard Louv's Last Child in the Woods, for example, about nature deficit disorder that leads to increased obesity and ADHD in our children. All of these benefits will be lost, and many environmental problems will be made worse if this area is converted into a mostly paved area with a soccer stadium, retail space, and market value housing. While this forest is not pristine and could use some active management to make it healthier and more productive, especially after Helene, it is one of the last remaining urban forests in Asheville, and should be preserved for its current high-impact uses and invaluable ecosystem services. As we have recently experienced a heat dome, think about the impacts urban trees and forests have in mitigating high temperatures, and how things might be different if these trees are replaced with pavement and concrete. Additional falsehoods from the chancellor are that the housing would benefit UNCA and help alleviate faculty and student housing shortages, but if it is truly market value, then it would be unaffordable to most of the UNCA community. In fact, the primary benefit of development of this space will be to the private developer. Most of the other tie-ins to the UNCA's mission mentioned by the chancellor in her proposal to the BOG are specious at best. According to the UNC system, millennial campuses should enhance the institution's research, teaching, and service missions, as well as enhancing economic development for the region served by the institution. But it seems the focus of this current proposal is the economic benefits to the private developer. We are currently providing more services to our students that are in direct alignment with the university's stated mission of research, teaching, and service by using the space for education and research activities as mentioned early. As you all know, UNCA's enrollment has declined by 25% over a five-year period coinciding with the COVID pandemic, and after a brief uptick last year, the enrollment for the coming year is projected to be several hundred students lower in the fall. While the administration blames these decreases on Helene, many believe that this decline is directly related to the current UNCA administration's policies, including canceling liberal arts programs, firing valued faculty staff, eliminating any DEI-related activities, and now proposed destruction of this campus-adjacent forest. I realize that this commission has limited capacity to act because this is state ownership of this property, but in response, I would like to echo the words of City Councilwoman Kim Roney and ask, are you doing all you can to oppose this development? I urge you to please do all you can to find alternatives other than the destruction of this vital resource. Thank you.
All right y'all, to be completely fair, this is the first meeting I'm doing, this is chair, I really can't let people clap if we don't do that for any other meeting, so I'm asking for a little bit of indulgence on that, don't need my boss to come back angry at me. Can we call up Sandy, I can't see the last name, and I think the next one is David Walter? On deck.
Hi there, my name is Dr. Sandy Neuss, I'm a psychologist, and I happen to study nature connection and the benefits of the outdoor. outdoors, the human psyche, and mental health issues. But I don’t want to speak to that, because what I really want to speak to is the fact that I’ve lived in Asheville for 22 years. I’m a professional. I’m a business owner. I’m a single mom of two teenage boys, 12 and 14, who go to Asheville City Schools. I’ve lived in three homes in the Asheville area, two of which I still own, all three of which are in Five Points. And why do I live there? There are two reasons. One, the neighborhood. It’s awesome. I love it. I walk around. I know my neighbors. Many of them are here, and those woods. I raise my children in those woods. I walk my animals in those woods. I bring myself there. And why? Because what I know is that nature has significant mental health benefits, cognitive benefits, and physical benefits. The research is solidly there. What I also know, because I study this, is that green space and urban forests in particular have been shown to increase property values, they increase social connections to communities, and those then benefit local businesses. So I gave a talk at city council in early summer about the same thing. And I did a lovely guided meditation—I’m an experiential educator—about the woods and the trees and the owls and the bears and all of those things, right? It was lovely. And that still exists, and we want that, okay? But what I also want to talk about now is what happens if they build this stadium? Would you want to live next to a stadium? I can see it from where I live. I can see the woods, and I would see the stadium. Do you want to raise your teenagers in a neighborhood where people are going to park in front of your house and drink beer in their car and throw that out of the stadium so they can get drunk on the way to the sports venue or the concert? Because I do not, okay? Please do not do this to us, okay? We’ve talked about the benefit. Imagine this: you’re sitting in your home, and your kids are like, “Hey, Mom, can we go walk around outside?” And I go, “Um, no,” because they’re screaming, there is amplified music, there are cheers. Like, I mean, I like to go to sports events. I like to go to concerts. Do I want them over there, like where I can see them from my house while I’m eating dinner? No. Do I want the noise pollution and the light pollution to be permeating my neighborhood? No, I do not, okay? So while green space and urban forests have been shown to increase our property values, what is this going to do to us, okay? Not only are we going to lose the place that we hold sacred, not only are we going to be betrayed by the university, by the county, by the city, because they don’t have any zoning, they don’t have any noise restriction, they can do whatever they want. But what is going to happen to my retirement, okay? I own two houses in this. What is going to happen to that? I rely on that income. I rely on that, and I rely on the peace of mind that living in this neighborhood brings to me and my children. Please do not take this from us. Stand with us and help us do something different and create a multi-use place for this that is not this thing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. All right, we have David Walter up next. All right, thank you. Mary Schultz. David Clark. And next up, just so you know, is Mary Thomas Gregory. Molly—sorry, Molly Thomas Gregory. Excuse me.
All right, thank you. My name is Dave Clark. I’m a botanist and been a professor in biology at UNCA for 25 years. Also an immediate neighbor to UNCA and the urban forest. I’ve lived at the corner of Vivian and George for 21 years, with my wife Mary Schultz and the audience. We bought our house in infill development from Brownie Newman. As a small—we also bought a small 1/8 of an acre lot that’s buildable, that’s adjacent to our house. Please stop by for the nickel tour. I’m serious. The vegetable garden is my front yard, garners many accolades. But when you come, I would really like to draw your attention to our backlot, which we have restored to high-quality natural area, mostly by removal of exotic invasives like Japanese honeysuckle, oriental bittersweet, English ivy. In comparison, UNCA relocated 300 acres in the neighborhood in the 1960s, and to their credit, using—until this last administration, focused intensive development in close proximity to existing buildings on the quad. This did leave almost half the campus undeveloped and provided wonderful opportunities for ecological fieldwork with students on campus. These field studies enabled our students to receive authentic research experience paid for by hundreds of thousands of dollars of year tax dollars from National Science Foundation and Biotech Center in North Carolina. We used these funds to pay students over the summer, who then went on to mentor a new cohort of students during the fall. The urban forest and Chestnut Ridge up near the observatory are critical resources and recruitment tools for any prospective student interested in field ecology or environmental work. After 25 years, I can look around at all the regional employers in the field, including you guys, and look at nonprofit agencies, state and federal agencies, private sector, and provide you with a long list of names of former students who found stable professional employment in North Carolina owing to the type of experience we provide using these natural areas on campus. The natural areas on campus are definitely not unused, a word used in language for the administration. Rather, they are essential for faculty and students for education, research, and recreation. In this endeavor, the university has behaved horribly. Why were none of the faculty, students, or neighbors informed about the destructive and heavy-handed exploratory work done with track hoes and drill rigs this January? Our permanent research plots have already been destroyed, and I have received no apology. I will not advance nimbic arguments, but I’m sure you realize how drastically the experience of living in Five Points will change when the university places a cool, tranquil woods with a raucous 5,000-seat stadium and high-density commercial and residential development. Alternative locations for a soccer field can be found on the river or in non-residential areas, and housing can be located elsewhere on campus. Many people are upset, but I sleep well at night, knowing that there is a right side and a wrong side of this issue from a scientific and social perspective. Those who look on our environmental destruction and the increasing pace of change, right, will leave a legacy that future generations will condemn.
Thank you. Molly Thomas Gregory. And then up next is Howard Lupez.
Hello, Commissioners. Thank you for giving us the opportunity to speak to you tonight about the importance of protecting the urban forest on UNCA’s campus. I hope that we can impress upon you, as your constituents and neighbors, the importance of passing a resolution expressing opposition to the development of this precious resource. There’s been a false dichotomy that has colored the conversation surrounding the preservation of the woods in recent days. Some maintain that to preserve this resource is to live clinging to history and that to develop it is to usher ourselves into modernity, that to develop is the only option outside of, quote, “doing nothing.” As is typical of our current political moment, this narrative reduces a complex problem with a variety of solutions to a shallow this or that in an attempt to manipulate the broader public. Not only is it unbelievable to describe the active preservation of ecologically and socially crucial land as “doing nothing,” the reduction in possible outcomes to “too” is meant to paint concerned citizens as lacking foresight and ingenuity. So let’s talk foresight. The fact is, to explore alternative solutions to UNCA’s capital problem and other land options for this millennial campus is possible. It is pertinent, and it is what our modern moment requires. To continue blindly developing ecologically precious spaces that house thousands of trees and even more wildlife is to live in the past. It is to put on the coal-stained uniform of industrialization and bring it into 2025. What the university and the city is set to make from such a development, we will lose twentyfold in the environmental reckoning that is and will continue to occur if we continue to, quote, “do nothing,” if we continue to place the haphazard whims of man above those of our broader community, flora and fauna included. And now I know that language makes me sound like an idealist, and I’d like to acknowledge that I am not a perfect environmentalist, not even close. I eat meat several times a week. I work in renewable energy development, which always isn’t environmentally straightforward, and I don’t always use my glass jar and straw when I visit my local coffee shop, but I try. And it is a responsibility of us all to look in the face of capital and ease and to choose life instead, to choose a new way of thinking and being that delivers funds to the university without sacrificing something so sacred. Even when it is uncomfortable, and especially when it is more difficult, we must bravely try to forge a new path forward, an ingenuative one. While our ask is different tonight than at the trustees’ meeting last week, the call to action is the same. The easy option is to do nothing, to let this development occur. The hard option is the more fruitful option, it is the brave option, and it is the option we ask you to pursue tonight. We ask you to do something, to pin a resolution expressing your dismay and to put pressure on the decision-makers. We ask you to aid us in identifying alternative locations or use for this development that do not endanger a rare resource, and we ask you to bravely craft a world for tomorrow instead of giving in to the world of today. Thank you.
Thank you. Up next is Howard Lupez. Next is Micah Moore. Am I reading that correctly?
Commissioners, my name is Howard Lupe. Although I am a new resident to this community, I am a registered voter, and I come here tonight with a cautionary tale. I said I was a new resident in this community. For 60 years, I lived in a place of unparalleled natural beauty. It was surrounded by water. It was surrounded by green space. We had the ability to move and travel to these spaces and places as we wished. It changed. This did not happen overnight. It happened incrementally. It happened over years. And one day, we woke up, and what did we find? Streets choked with traffic, our infrastructure overburdened, our public spaces narrowed and constricted and sold off to developers for stadiums or residential developments. That’s why I left. The town that I lived in, that was a beautiful, beautiful town, close to Asheville, became uninhabitable. And it became uninhabitable on the empty promises of developers who told us there would be jobs, we would build parks, we would build public spaces. They did none of that. And what I would urge you to think about is not the community that we’re going to have tomorrow, or the next day, or even six months from now. I am going to ask you to think about the community that you want to live in five years from now, 10 years from now. What do you want that to be like? Do you want it to be the place that it is now, or do you want it to be uninhabitable? Because this development will not stop unless our public people do whatever they can to put the brakes on it. I want you all to think about, in everything we hear, there’s very little talk about how our infrastructure is going to be overburdened. There’s very little talk about the roads that are going to have to be widened. There’s very little talk about water. There’s very little talk about pollution. Where I lived, our bays became polluted by runoff. Our rivers were polluted by developers. That is going to happen here unless our public figures do the best they can to stop it. And I urge you all to consider this when you listen to the promise of jobs. What are you going to say to all of those businesses who are along those streets like Merriman and Weaverville Road that are going to wind up having to close down because the roads are going to have to be widened? And mark my words, they will have to be widened.
Thank you, sir. Micah, you’re up next, and then Tom Craig.
My name is Micah Moon. I’m a storyteller. Once upon a time, at a commissioners’ meeting much like this one, a ship landed outside, and three people stepped out from the future, 500 years in the future. Each of them was from a different timeline, and the first one stepped up to the commissioners’ meeting, and they said, “What are you here for?” And they said, “Well, we’re all here on the same mission. We’re bringing a message from the future.” And the first one was dressed in skins and wore a knife, and the skins he wore were not animal skins, they were human skins. And he said, “After—the time of reckoning in the future, that point of no return, everything factionalized and fell apart, and we struggle to make ends meet now. The population is much lower, but we beg you, please, please preserve the green spaces. It’s so hard to garden on developed land. It’s so hard to find spaces that are clean and not toxic.” The second person stepped forward, full of gadgetry, with silver skin and wires embedded in his body, and he said, “I come from 500 years in the future. Everything came to a tipping point, and technocratic fascism became the rule of the land. The police are everywhere, and they do not even get to decide what goes on in this failed democracy anymore. But little did we realize, as we cut everything down and developed all the parts of the earth, how valuable biological technology would be. In fact, we barely have a place to bury our dead anymore. So we ask you to please preserve the green spaces as you make way for this magnificent hierarchical society of the future.” The third person stepped forward, also from a timeline in the future of this earth, and he said, “I am from a place where much struggle occurred, and we had to work together, come together as people battling against natural disaster to finally figure out how to network ourselves into a good earth. But little did we realize how hard it would be to make that happen without green spaces, without natural spaces of trees and forest. Please do not waste the natural world that you have. Do everything you can.” Even though they came from separate timelines, they all carried the same message, a strange brothership they were. The commissioner, after they were finished speaking, said, “But which future is coming? How do we know what choice to make for the good future we want together?” And the three of them shook their heads and said, “We cannot tell you, but we hope you choose more wisely than we did.”
Thank you, sir. Tom Craig is up next, and then Susan Shimer.
Good evening. My name is Tom Craig. I live in North Asheville. I’ve been a resident of Buncombe County since ’78 and of the city since ’81. And as a matter of fact, ironically, I lived in the neighborhood where this monstrosity is going to try to get developed. I come to this—I want to say, first of all, that I think this is a bad idea. I totally oppose it. It needs to go back to the drawing board. And it doesn’t take an environmentalist or an urban planner to see the problems with this. They’ve been described very well. I won’t even attempt to touch what people have said about them, but I agree with them, and I think this is wrong. I have a personal kind of destiny thing involved here, as I’m a big soccer fan. I’ve been a soccer fan since 1966 or so, and I’m also a big environmental fan. I’ve been to marches in New York and plenty of actions in Asheville. So I’m sort of torn. I’m like, “Ooh, I’d like to see soccer develop. I think it’s a wonderful game if you take away the management of it.” And it’s like, I don’t know. I don’t know if it’s going to—how I’m going to end up feeling about it. Well, I have to go and get arrested to stop a chainsaw or so? Anyway, I wanted to talk about the two—the two bad—I talked about the two bad ideas, the environment and the urban planning aspect of it. And I just want to suggest something that I haven’t heard. I’m not deep involved in this movement to stop the project, but I haven’t heard about—I’ve heard people say there are alternatives. I’d like to see them brought out and discussed and debated like we’re doing now. And also, the—I don’t know if you’ve ever been over to Greenwood Field and UNCA campus. I’ve been going there for many years. But if you look at the far side where there’s no stands, that’s a considerable piece of land over there. I mean, it’s got to be—it’s got to be five acres at least. I don’t know. It’s enough to put—to enhance that area for soccer or concert venues, too. So I just wanted to make sure I got that out. The thing—I think the straw that broke my camel’s back was the idea of another hotel. My wife and I have a favorite joke about how all these wonderful hotels that have been built recently are going to be Section 8 housing after the crash. And so I—you know, I hope that doesn’t happen, but I wouldn’t be surprised if that would be the situation. And we don’t need another hotel. We don’t need, you know, that noise. The lady described her situation, watch—you know, look. Okay, I’ll stop for now, but thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, Susan, you’re up next, and after you is Matthew Zimmerman.
Changing topic. As you all might remember, I’m the advisory—I’m the Chair of the community—excuse me, I’ve been overwhelmed with the woods—the Buncombe County Home and Community Block Grant Advisory Committee. I came today to say thank you. Thank you very much for the allocation of the supplemental. Thank you very much for the allocation of the supplemental aging funds. They are much appreciated. The committee had a compressed application review and approval process. And on the twenty-eighth of June, we did resolve to fund twelve programs. And we are very delighted. These funds will support our residents sixty years and older and their caregivers. It will allow them to age in place in their homes with respect and dignity. So briefly, Buncombe County In-Home Aid, Day Stay and Chandler for Group Respite, Working Wheels Car Repair, Blue Ridge Pride, Mahex Home-Based Primary Care, On Track Financial Counseling, Unit A Senior Center Catering to Hispanic and Latino Community, even charities for housing stabilization, manor care, excuse me, memory care for older adults with cognitive impairment, Mountain Care, Transportation for Adults to Their Day Programs, Center for Conscious Living and Dying, which provides three hundred and sixty-five days of phone support for caregivers dealing with the end of life of their family members. And lastly, Better Together Transportation. And they give free rides, free transportation to seniors and people with disabilities. So as a reminder, and you've heard this from me before, North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services in 2022 says that twenty-nine percent of our county is sixty-plus, and by 2042, that's projected to rise to thirty-seven percent. And I really can't thank you enough from the providers. We've gotten such overwhelming feedback. People were concerned. They were skeptical, but now they are very relieved and delighted. So I appreciate you putting up with me. Thank you, and have a good evening.
Thank you. All right, Matthew Zimmerman. And next up after that is Jeffrey de Cristofano, Cristofaro, excuse me.
Hello there, commissioners. My name is Matthew Zimmerman. I'm actually a student at UNCA, Navy veteran. And I have the privilege, immense privilege, of being able to go to UNCA. So during the first semester, I was there. I worked very closely with a lot of the students there. Became a senator on the student government. And this has become a huge issue for, I'll call my constituents, but this is a hugely popular movement with the students. And I really should say an unpopular movement because nobody, none of our students want this. And there is a huge movement that's, that's being developed behind this. I want you all to know that. And I mean, you see the folks here today. It's, it's kind of incredible to see the community that's being developed. And, and, you know, the level of organization that I've been seeing with these guys is awesome. So it gives something, gives us something to stand for. But at the same time, like, it is actually depressing to see what is even taking place right now. Clearing out the woods is, it's gonna be a process that I don't think anybody's ready for. The students are all scared. Dealing with this administration has also been incredibly difficult. Over the summer, they fired our dean of students, Megan Poe, for a video that they got a fur that they secretly recorded somehow. It was a right-wing organization that recorded her and used her statements on that to, you know, go up the chain and got her fired. We also have trans students that were dehoused. They were sent out email telling them that they could not go to their preferred gender housing the next semester. So, yeah, it's really, it's really important to save these woods, obviously. But I did want to invite you guys to our Save the Woods meeting. I think the next one is Thursday. Maybe somebody can speak on that this Thursday at the church. It'd be great to see some, some commitment, some support for this issue. I can promise you that any, it'll look good on, on any type of political resume, whatever, whatever it takes, you know? But, but this is really, it's just something that, God, I, you know, I was just out there the other day walking around, and the level of nature, and it's, it's so pristine. There are ways to get extreme value out of it, if that's what we're looking for. These, these folks have a lot of insanely good ideas for that to integrate as well. So thank you so much for your time, and I'd like to see some commitment from, from leadership. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zimmerman. Next up, Jeffrey. And Jeffrey, I'm just gonna stop for one second. Is there anybody else who did not get their name on the list that felt compelled to speak? All right, perfect. Jeffrey, close us out.
All right. Where do I hit the button?
You don't have to press anything.
Okay, thank you. Members of the Buncombe County Commission, as a current member of Blue Ridge Audubon, Indivisible AVL, and Save the Woods UNCA, and as one who personally witnessed the damage done to my neighborhood and Asheville as a whole by Hurricane Helene, I cannot further stress the absolutely mandatory importance of preserving and protecting the woods outside the UNC Asheville campus. As Asheville remains one of America's greatest tourist hotspots, largely due to the surrounding wilderness of the Blue Ridge, which is also essential to combating climate change and maintaining vital biodiversity of the Appalachian Mountains as a whole, so it's our paramount duty to ensure that no more acres of woodland, both within and outside Asheville-Buncombe County, are lost to overconstruction, which would only serve to further diminish Asheville's status as a mountain paradise. Prior to Helene, I have witnessed, both on the news and in person, the effects of climate change, including false springs, wildfires, flooding in the French Broad, and more. Two years ago, while on a family trip to Gatlinburg, I witnessed from the road along the state border, fires raging out of control from the peak to the interstate, with thick smoke choking the air. Thanks to Helene alone, it's estimated that between eight hundred to nine hundred thousand acres of forests in western North Carolina alone were destroyed. To lose the woods outside UNC Asheville just for the construction of yet another stadium would contribute to not only light and noise pollution for those living close by, but also a critical loss of wildlife habitat, as already suffered in botanical gardens outside the campus and the North Carolina Arboretum, and rising temperatures that would further enhance the risk of climate disasters, including wildfires, flooding, hurricanes like Helene, and more, which would lead to the loss of human and animal lives, established properties and businesses, and billions of dollars in revenue that would cripple a local economy already hanging by a thread following major national cuts. The acres outside the campus cannot and must not be added as another casualty. Rather than clear these woods, I propose, with justified dire urgency, the need to keep these woods intact and to enhance public awareness to UNC students and staff, tourists, residents, and city government officials alike of the need to keep them intact as part of the city and surrounding natural environment. I further highly recommend that this region be permanently marked, just like Beaver Lake Bird Sanctuary, as a nature preserve, with trails, markers, and ranger station to be added if necessary, along with commemorative plaque for the human lives lost to climate change disasters like Helene, for both residents in this area and visitors from within and outside the state to visit and better learn and appreciate the necessity for restoring, expanding, and protecting our nation's ecosystems at all costs. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. All right, thank everyone who gave public comment today. It is truly appreciated, and we appreciate hearing from everyone in our community about all topics. If you have any information that you'd like to leave with the clerks, Sarah will happily accept it. Contact information, anything else, but thank you for being present. I'm going to jump to the manager's report. County Manager Pinder, is there anything you'd like to share?
No report.
Thank you, ma'am. We do have one presentation, apart from the two proclamations that we offered. One is for the homeowner grant program, which is going to be presented by Mr. Philip Harden. Welcome, Philip.
Good evening. Here tonight to talk about the homeowner grant, which actually opened applications today.
I can't hear him.
Can you hear me now? All right, sorry. Opened applications today. This is just a historical number of applications that we took for the homeowner grant over the past four years. Look, the first year we ran the homeowner grant was FY22, and we took, we approved a little over twelve hundred applications that year. The next year, we approved about seven hundred applications, and then a little over six hundred applications. And then last year was a little bit of an anomaly. We ended up approving around seven hundred, eight hundred, almost eight hundred applications. Just a note there, we took a lot of applications after we opened the homeowner grant back up in November after the storm, because the storm caused us to lose the last three days of September. And we took almost as many applications in that one week as we did July through September. Demographics for the homeowner grant, not specified, five hundred and fifty-seven. White, five seventeen. Prefer not to report, one sixty-three. Black, African-American, forty-two, and so on. What we have done this year, it's not a required field to report race. So if they do not put anything, if they just skip over that question, it comes out as not specified. If they can open that and put something in, they can still do, prefer not to report. So we've changed it this year to make that a required field. They can still not report if they want to, but we think that we'll get better demographic information if we do it that way. Still not eligibility factor, but if you look at it, the numbers, you have almost seven hundred that you really don't know. And this is applications by zip code, and certainly by far, two eight eight oh six led the way, and then two eight eight oh three and two eight seven one five. And then total amount split by jurisdiction, three hundred and seventy-eight thousand for Buckham County in 2022, and ninety thousand for the city of Asheville. In the first two years we ran the program, and I don't have the statistics on here, Woodfin also participated. The town of Woodfin participated in twenty-two and twenty-three, and then chose not to participate thereafter. And then once again, our spending for last year was a little of an anomaly because we took almost six hundred applications in the week in November. So it was up over the twenty-four year. And then the policy for the homeowner grant. Eighty percent of the area median income, which for a family of four is around seventy-seven thousand dollars. We have a reserve limit, and that was instituted after the first year. And then it has to be a primary residence that you have to occupy twelve months out of the year. You can't own multiple properties unless they're adjoining. That was a tweak or a change after the first year. Five-year homeownership, has to be a single-family residence. You can't already receive a tax exemption. There's four tax exemptions, state tax exemptions. And, you know, the most used ones are the elderly disabled veterans are state tax exemptions. And you can't receive that state tax exemption. And we'll distribute flowers throughout, flyers throughout the county this year. In years past, we had stuffed with the property tax bill those flyers. But once again, last year, we did not do that because of the reevaluation, and then got put off to this year, so there's no room to be able to put the flowers in property tax bills this year. And I want to give you a little historical context, too, about the policy. It's an HHS program. It's not a tax exemption program. It's thus, it's called a homeowner grant, because legally, the county can't run a tax exemption program. They can run a welfare program, and that's how this grant actually came to HHS when we first ran it. And these are budgeted amounts. In twenty-four, we had two hundred thousand county dollars budget. We just burst a hundred and eighty-six thousand. Last year, we had two hundred and fifty-two thousand. Spent almost all that. The coming year, we have a hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars budget, county dollars. And the city of Asheville actually reduced their allocation from a hundred and fifty thousand to seventy-five thousand this year. We started taking applications today. I'll tell you, we took seventy-two applications on the first day as of five o'clock today. So I think that we will have a large number of people. I think a large number of people are still recovering from the storm. And, and look at this as a help for them. So any questions?
Thank you, Philip. Any questions from county commissioners?
Before, I'm sorry. Philip, can you put that back and go back to the policy highlights? Because I really do want the board to take a look at those highlights and see if there's any changes that you want us to look at in those. This is a presentation, so no action, but if you give us some guidance, then we can come back with a change to policy if so desired. Sorry, Commissioner.
No problem. Philip, thank you for this presentation. So we have seventy-two applications in the first day. Do we know historically how that compares to other first days? I know it's only been one, but I'd be curious if, if not today, or if not a comparison of today to past years, maybe the first week, if we could get that or something.
I'll tell you that last year, between July fifteenth and September twenty-seventh, when the storm hit, we took a little over six hundred applications total. So that's about one-ninth of the applications we took in almost a two-and-a-half-month period.
And you stated that we're not placing flyers in tax bills this year?
Because of the reevaluation, there's not room in, in the tax bills to have that extra information in there.
Okay. Maybe that might be a future discussion to figure out. There's some way, because I feel like that was such a useful way to make sure that everybody knew about it. I'm also curious if we can explore other avenues to promote this program. Maybe robo-calls or our tech system that we have.
I don't think we have the authority to do the tax calls, the texts, the robo-calls. I'm the authority that we have to do that. But I think Philip mentioned we will be placing flyers around the county and getting that word out. This is, normally, we will put it in the tax bill, but this year, because of revalue, the other information in that tax bill. So we will be using, and I'm looking at Lillian and her team, because what Philip is saying, we will go around the county and really get that word out in a different way this year.
We can use, we have a lot of, we're a member of an organization called Beacon, or the Buncombe Emergency Assistance Network, Coordinating Network. It's about fifty or more organizations that we meet every two months, and we can make sure that those, all those organizations have those flyers also.
Yeah, it seems such a great, great opportunity to let folks know in that, in that bill immediately. And then the one other question I had, I was digging through our FY26 budget, trying to find it. It was my understanding that we maintained the allocation for this from FY25 to FY26. I thought we left that flat, but this says we dropped that by about a hundred thousand dollars from FY25 to FY26?
It went down.
It was one fifty-five.
It did. Now, what I will say, I think the two hundred and fifty-five thousand that we spent last year also included some administrative funds in there. We, we have used contract staff to help run this program in years past. It's a lot of work.
Yeah, I know it's a huge burden.
It takes a lot of staff to run the program. And, you know, we've gotten to the point where we've kind of used our existing staff to run the program for the first couple of years, but we kind of ran out of capacity.
Yeah, that makes sense.
There's a lot of back and forth between us and the tax department also because of those tax exemptions. And they have to look up and make sure that people aren't having applied or they're receiving a tax exemption, so that does slow some of the process down.
Got it, yeah. For some reason, I thought that we had left it at around two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Got it, yeah, I, for some reason I thought that we had left it at around two hundred and fifty thousand dollars budgeted to leave it around the same as last year FY twenty-five. But if you're saying that this is a combination of the city's funding and ours, so that drop is a re- a result of the city reducing their funding?
That was independent of our decision.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, the, and they, we tradu- I don't think in all the years we've run the program, we've come ever, ever come very close to expending their hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Uh, that they've allocated over the years. And I think that probably had some, something to do with them reducing their allocation this year.
Got it, yeah, I just see the FY twenty-five, two hundred and thirty-six thousand total dispersed and we have less than that budgeted this year. I'm concerned about the possibility of having to turn people away from this useful program.
What we have committed to in the past is if somebody's eligible, we'll come back to the board and let them know what that shortfall looks like. Before we would tell someone that they're not eligible, then the board can make that decision if they want to add more or if they want to maintain as is.
Got it, okay.
That's what, that's what we did the first year because we spent, we budgeted three hundred thousand that first year and we expended three hundred and eighty-nine, three hundred and ninety thousand dollars. We came, came back to this board and asked.
It'll come back to the board before anyone's turned away from this program?
We'll hold on to the applications until that uh would happen.
Okay, thank you Phillip, appreciate it.
Phillip, what percentage of the people who apply don't qualify?
Um, it's a pretty small percentage. Uh, I think last year we approved almost eight hundred and we took almost twelve hundred applications. Uh, some of them were already receiving. There's nothing prohibits you, there's a screening tool that people apply online for. But some of those folks were already receiving a tax exemption and they applied anyway. Uh, you know, some of them we required some documentation from and uh, we didn't get it back. Uh, so it's not a huge percentage of people. Uh, it, it. I mean, if you approve and seventy percent of the applications, that's pretty high.
Thank you.
So.
Any other, go ahead.
Sorry, um, this is one of those programs that I would support us doing regardless of what the metrics said, the quantity of people, I think it's something, it's a good idea. Uh, to try to give money back to the folks that qualify for this. But we've, we've talked about this a lot over the years that I've, I've been here and tried to figure out kind of, it takes a lot of staff times, or is there a way to reduce that burden? How big a, how big a pot of money should we have? You know, what what kind of people are eligible, are we finding them, these are all the questions, we've talked about it really every year. Um, so I'm trying to think of new questions to ask you. Um, because I, I do want to boil down to kind of, you know, are, are we doing enough to reach enough people is one question. And then have we really thought through? You know, the, the level of application scrutiny that we need to have to run a program like this, which I guess I hadn't thought of as a welfare program until you described it to me today. Um, so is there? Are there things or elements of the application or the framework of this program that we could eliminate or consider taking away? To reduce the burden on your staff and reduce the, the work that we need to do? Because at the end of the day, we're just trying to give money back to people.
Right.
Right?
Correct. Um, this would be my opinion of the policies that exist now. Probably the easiest one would be the people who already receive state tax exemptions. Uh, if you eliminated that, because that would save our staff time, it would save the tax department's staff time. Uh, and um. I, I think the other pro to that is you know that you're, you're helping low-income people. Because they've already actually qualified for a tax exemption at a state level and their, their income level is much less than the homeowner grant income level.
So you're, so I'm completely clear on that. Right now, the policy highlights say that you cannot already receive a state tax exemption, you're proposing that we remove that restriction to?
That's a thought, I mean, you asked.
No, I, I just wanted to make sure I'm clear, that wasn't.
You asked the question.
Yeah, I want to know your thoughts, yeah.
The reserve limit, you know, we, we've kind of batted that around over the years. I think there's some benefit to that reserve limit and I will tell you, that first year, we took a, we had no reserve limit and we took a lot of applications. And uh, we asked the question about liquid reserve, uh, which is cash on hand, checking, savings accounts. Things that you can convert to money within seven days. And there were a very large percentage of people that had over three hundred thousand dollars uh at cash on hand. Uh, they were income qualified, so I think the reserve limit serves some purpose.
That, that requires work too, because you need to ask folks that and then investigate it a little bit and, yeah, okay.
Can we follow up with additional questions at a later point, because I, I don't understand the difference between four-year, five-year minimum, that doesn't, it's just an arbitrary number to me. But if there's some reasoning behind that, I'd love to hear it, I just, there's a whole bunch of small questions like that, I, I don't really see people being in our community four years being that an impediment to them receiving support there. But I also don't want to split hairs while we're picking your brain.
Yeah, the, the homeownership piece, I'll jump in there because I do have to make sure we think through the state tax exemption.
Right.
I hear Phillip's reasoning because it would be less time to actually verify with the tax office. But I do have some pause, but when we start saying that we would not do a state tax exemption, so. If there's questions that we can bring back to you, that's one I would want to make sure we take some time to look at and bring back to you. The five-year homeownership, it was just, to your point, arbitrary, it was a decision that was made early on. And um, since this is a program that is not across the state, we like to make sure we're tweaking it and having your input to see if there are things that you hear or see that you want to do. Parker, it is clear that this is not a tax exempt program and, and I need to make sure I say that because we cannot legally do that.
Right.
When, when we created this program, it really was about an HHS program, that's what runs through that office. Almost like our general assistance program that we offer now for people that need help with just general things in their, in their daily lives. And I want to make sure we are clear that that is what this is, it is a welfare program, it is a general assistance program. And so it needs to be about the area median income, our authority is about that low-income type assistance that we can give. So I want to make sure that those are the things that are must stay in this, in this program, however we slice it or dice it. We need to make sure that we are within the law and tight within that framework. So are there things on here that you want to touch? Absolutely, that's an area value to do. But I, I would give some pause and I want to make sure we think through before we say, because it's going to help on staff work, that we would take away that assistance on the state taxes. I would rather have a contract with somebody that's on the outside to do that work than to start peeling away things that we need to keep.
You do or you do not have someone on contract?
We do have a contract now to help with some of that assistance, the piece that we don't have is in the tax office. The tax office staff are the ones that do the work to check between that state tax exemption. We don't have assistance in the tax office right now, so it's, it's a lot of coordination between those two departments to get that section checked. And I think that's what Phillip is saying, if we can take that away, they don't have to worry about checking that, I, I do have some pause that we will take that away.
But most of, I think I, I brought up the welfare thing because I, I don't think I've understood in the past. That, that's the reason why, or the answer to the question, why do these various application requirements exist? It's because it's modeled after a, a typical welfare program, is that, am I understanding that right?
Because I'm the authority that we have to give just, give out funds.
Right, right.
And that, that, that is exactly correct, I mean, we, we, I mean, we run lots of programs that have lots and lots of rules. We didn't want to put as, we want to put as few rules in place as possible, but somewhat mimic the public assistance programs that we already run.
Of course, okay.
Any other input at this time, it seems like we'll all probably follow up with you.
Yeah, well, to recap what I'm hearing, I think Jennifer, you have some questions? So we can take a look at that ownership, the five-year minimum, I don't believe, that's not a basis in anything at the time we started it. That one, and we'll take a look at the tax, state tax exemption as well. Is there any others on here?
Single residence property? As opposed to a, a?
A landlord, a sex, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
An accessory dwelling or something like that?
Mostly, yes, mostly you don't, it could be um, single residence home versus that you have a duplex and you're renting one out or something like that, so.
Except for a family of four, it's, it actually went down this year a little bit, I can't quite understand that, but uh, went down. It was a seventy-eight thousand house around seventy-four, six thousand. For a single-family person, it's a little over fifty thousand dollars a year.
Any other questions?
That eighty percent AMI that we see on a weekly basis as local government folks is, is tied back to uh, a legal theory of what poverty is? Is that roughly fair?
It's a legal theory of what county government can fund. We, we, we stay in that eight, that low-income, moderate-income refund and stuff.
And if I can just chime in, that's pretty much the low, when defining low and moderate income, eighty percent AMI is pretty much used. In most of the other things when you're talking about, let's say affordable housing and, and other things like that, so that's pretty much been the accepted. Although it's not been precisely defined by statute, that's what everybody's been using as sort of the definition.
I love it when you say it's not been precisely defined, that's, that's my favorite.
And I will say that that's probably the largest income uh, limit of any program we administer.
Okay.
So that's the limit?
That's correct.
All right, anyone else? Not going to cut anybody off. Alright, cool, we've got some homework to do, thank you Phillip.
Before we, I'll just say that this would be for the next year because we're currently open, okay, just want to make sure I clarify.
Thank you. Right, next up we have Allison Vanzoff and David Swett from Health and Human Services, and they are here to provide some background information about consideration of the. Home and Community Care Block Grant Agreement and Funding Plan. I refuse to use acronyms the rest of the day, so you're stuck with long language.
Thank you Commissioners, uh, Allison and I are happy to come and answer your questions, but i- in essence, um. The Home and Community Care Block Grant is, that's a block of federal funds that we receive here in the community and is jointly managed between the county commissioners. The Local Area Aging Services Council, the Land of Sky Regional Council, Buckham County Aging, Aging Services Alliance and other providers. And because it is a jointly managed pot of money. That basically requires a steering committee and advisory committee to help us guide, guide us on the allocation recommendations. And then on June third, this body approved another three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars in supplemental aging funds be awarded into this process. So what we are bringing for you tonight is a recommendation to adopt by resolution and accept and implement the recommendations of the steering committee. Or the advisory committee, but that um, would require a board action and Allison is much more intelligent about all of this than I am. So she's here to answer any questions that you may have.
But to be clear, this would just be adopting recommendations that have already been made by the, okay.
Correct, yes, to adopt the uh, recommendations that were made by the Home and Community Care Block Grant Committee as well as to approve, um, Buckham County is the lead agency. Um, for Home and Community Care Block Grant, um, as well, so.
Does anyone have any questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Is a motion needed?
Motion.
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, I'll make the motion to approve the considerations and, and recommendations by the home.
Land of Sky is the organization. It would be a motion to approve and sign the Home Community Care Block Grant for the older um, adults agreement, et cetera, et cetera. Want to get this, spell out the whole thing, do we, Kurt?
I believe you have the allocations in your. You have the allocations in your packet.
We do have a proposed resolution, so I guess it would be a motion to adopt the resolution and that should take care of all the finer details regarding.
So that, that is separate and apart from the document that's currently online, just.
No, the resolution should be online and part of the documents.
No, I'm, I'm saying they're two separate things, so one has one form of motion, the other has a resolution separate from that, but that's fine, I, please.
I will move to adopt the resolution as, as presented.
Thank you, we have a motion and a second, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Is unanimous? Save the questions for another day?
Thank you.
All right, and next up we have Dane Peterson. For the third time today, buddy. He is here to provide background information on consideration of the C and D landfill phase eight construction contract.
So thankful for all this quality time Commissioners, good to see you again, my name is Dane Peterson, I'm the Buckham County Soil Waste Director. And I'm here this evening to request this board approve a construction contract with Buchanan and Sons. For the next expansion of our construction demolition landfill, which will be phase eight. A brief summary on this project, so Buckham County Soil Waste is currently operating in phase seven, which is our active disposal area for construction demolition materials. Phase seven will fill to capacity within the next several months and the soil waste departments need to, needs to construct the next disposal area, which is phase eight. Construction for the four-point-seven acre phase eight disposal area is planned to begin in August next month of twenty twenty-five. And will take approximately seven months to, to, to construct, weather pending, we know how uh, site work packages work. Uh, phase eight has an estimated disposal capacity of five to six years. Uh, Buchanan and Sons Incorporated has emerged as the lowest responsive bidder for the landfill phase eights construction demolition expansion project. By submitting a bid for the project, uh, or to complete the project for two million, ninety-three thousand, fifteen dollars and ninety-three cents. So that is the recommended motion and request before this board this evening is to adopt the resolution authorizing the execution of a contract. For the construction and demolition landfill phase eight expansion with Buchanan and Sons Incorporated. And I'll be happy to try to answer any questions you may have.
Seems like that's just moving forward, something that's already in the works?
Yes sir, we've had this on the, you know, in collaboration with our team, uh, budget finance for a number of years on our, on our capital improvement planning. Uh, we know it's coming, obviously, like we talked about in the fee, uh, fee schedule, fee plan, budget process with the board. The storm has certainly collapsed some of our timeframes for disposal capacity. We talked about three and a half million cubic yards that's been managed through DFA that we strategically got outside the county of our landfill footprint. However, we know that there's a lot more material that's come into our landfill, so again, on the MSW side, municipal soil wastelandfill as well as the construction demolition landfill. We took a major hit from the storm, no question. So that has collapsed some of the timelines, but this has been a plan and in the works for, for years, yes.
Well, if no one objects, or has any further question?
Just, I, I, my quick question is, I guess, when will we know that the damage from a lean in terms of the landfill capacity?
Absolutely, it's an annual survey we do each year Commissioner, and we'll, we'll provide that information, uh, we have, we, it's based on annual topographic survey of the landfill footprint, right? So how much space have we used in a given annual cycle compared to what the permitted volume is? So we run those calculations, we get an estimated remaining life capacity on both C and D landfill and MSW landfill. So we'll, we'll have those numbers really soon, that's in the works, we've already had the survey for this year. Uh, we just know based on our, the numbers we see each week, each day.
Yeah.
Certainly closer to the event was very escalated, those are starting to come back more in line with historicals now, but a major impact.
It sounds like that analysis will be more scientific than just looking at past data, you, you actually can look at imagery that.
Absolutely.
Will tell you a better answer.
Yes, it's kind of transitioned from, it used to be boots-on-the-ground topo survey to uh, more of an aerial uh, for control, so.
I, I just want to also note that I think we as commissioners should be thinking about waste reduction strategies. I don't know if there's any studies that we've put out that, that look at maybe shifting to composting or single-use plastic waste reduction that can extend the life of our landfill. Because um, this is obviously not a cheap endeavor, but I think it's incumbent upon us to be creative in how we extend the life of our landfill, to save taxpayers money and um, put less trash out into the world.
Absolutely Commissioner, yeah, we're, we'll be excited to announce a, hopefully a ribbon cutting soon, we've got a compost facility or compost shed that's just about complete. So a lot of programming and information going on right now, but uh, yes, to your point, we have some really good diversion programs. We're going to look to really focus on enhancing those and expanding those where it makes sense, because that, that's, that's the, that's the key, right? We want to protect the environment, protect our community members, landfill is the effective way to do that, so we got to maximize that space.
All right.
Motion, motion to adopt the resolution authorizing the execution of the.
Motion to adopt the resolution authorizing the execution of the contract for construction and demolition landfill phase eight expansion with Buchanan and Sons.
Second. To Commissioner Horton. All right, any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Fantastic. Thank you, Dane.
Thank you, Commissioners.
And when that ribbon cutting happens, biodegradable, please. All right, next up, we have the Swanano Steering Committee. Gillian, I know you are here.
Mark, I'm sorry.
Healthy Opportunities?
That's right. I apologize.
That's great.
For you of this exciting opportunity. We will turn it over for the new business vote that we made a change to, discussing a letter that came up during briefing. We modified our agenda. Commissioner Wells, if you'd like to take it away.
Thank you. Yes, this, Commissioner Horton, Chair Edwards and I had all requested this letter for the, a letter of support for the Healthy Opportunities Program. And we discussed this some in our briefing and I appreciate everyone's consideration. And so a little bit more about this program. It's been, in Western North Carolina, that it is run by Impact Health. And there's several organizations within Buncombe County that participate in this program. And it helps with food access, providing healthy food to people. It helps with housing, transportation, as well as personal violence. So there's, there's four different programs within it. And the, I've been seeing this on the ground for the past couple of years and the impact of this program across Buncombe County. But specifically, when I'm out in Barrensville as well as Swananoa, I've seen a lot of really important work with this program. And been very thankful that these organizations have been able to build their human capacity to run these programs. Because as I shared with you all earlier, I told, I told people that if we did not already have these programs in place, Halleen would have been even more devastating than what it already was. Because these nonprofits have been able to, just, they already had the relationships with people. And so they were able to be out there and really know the needs and get food to people, help with housing, help with other needs. And so that's been tremendously impactful. And it was, it was very disappointing that because our state legislature has not been able to agree on a budget, that this program right now is not being funded. And so this is directly impacting people in our community as we speak. Our hope is with this letter of support is to reach out to our state legislators and encourage them that when they come together to work on and approve a state budget, that they will include this Healthy Opportunities Program and continue to fund it. When I was down there a few weeks ago, the, our senators, many of them that I spoke with were supportive, were willing to put that in a mini-budget. Of course, that did not happen, so it did come to an end for the time being. But just speaking about some of the numbers, you know, we included several numbers within the report there or within the letter. But I do just want to highlight a few others. So there's basically within Western North Carolina, there's about 75 million in outlays to HOP participants. And when you look at specifically Buncombe County, that's about 21 million of that is in Buncombe County alone. So it's very significant here, the impact to us. And then what, if you look at the total economic impact beyond that, because Impact Health is working with someone to do an impact analysis. So that's where they look at the input and the output to look at the broader economic impact. And, and so I don't have that total broad impact yet, but I know that like specifically the total economic impact for the food programs alone, that's 74 million broader impact for just the food programs alone, not even all of those programs I mentioned. And then that comprises more than 500 jobs in additional to the direct jobs. And then a little over 22 million in income. So when you look at that broader impact on our community, on Western North Carolina and within Buncombe County, it's very significant with that as well. And so just to give you an idea, you know, there's more than 400 farms that they're buying food directly from these farms, or they were, and 81 of those are in Buncombe County. So it's, it's directly, and as I mentioned earlier, I've spoken with several farmers and they figured this into their plans of when they were planting their crops for the year because they had about 20% that they count on from this program. And so now, right now, that's come to an end too for them while they're trying to figure that out. So it directly helps so many in our community that need, they need healthy food. And, and it helps those health outcomes. And so when you look at it, it actually saves in the long run because you're invested on the front end with the prevention. And I'll just share one very brief story that's, as actually Bellney and Soul were sharing with me over in Swananoa. And they were sharing how there was a young girl who was struggling with diabetes. And they, you know, the mother, the single mom, just didn't have access to the healthy food that she needed. And they worked with her. And so this young girl had been missing school. She was spending a lot of time in and out of the hospital. The mom wasn't able to keep down a job because of those needs. And they got her on a healthier track now. And so that young lady is able to stay in school and her mother's able to work. And so it's, it goes well beyond just these numbers that I put here in this letter as well. And so I would greatly appreciate, or we would greatly appreciate everyone's support in sending this to our state legislators and advocating for this program.
I think we conveyed during the briefing that we're very excited by this and thank you for your leadership and championing this. And more than one trip to Raleigh, which is no small thing from where we live, so thank you for that. And I'm excited to support these groups. These are folks who have come up and helping us in so many ways in our community. So it's really a no-brainer for me, but if anyone else wants to weigh in, now's the time.
I'll just, again, thank you for the leadership. And just elevate that, you know, in the face of federal cuts, I know a lot of our partners are in need of these funds and that certainty. So thank you again for your support this.
With that? So you make the motion, Jennifer.
If hypothetically someone wanted to make a motion, it would be a motion to approve the letter.
Motion to approve the letter.
Okay, good.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Fantastic. Probably wouldn't have liked it all that much anyway. I'm excited to see this go out and I'm sorry that Chair Edwards is not here, but I'm confident that she would convey her support as well. Thank you, Commissioner Wells, and thank you, Commissioner Horton. Next up, we have the Swananoa Steering Committee. Gillian, you are on deck if we need it. I'm going to do my best impression to just say what we need and if I miss anything, correct me. So we have a Swananoa Steering Committee. The board received about 45 applications for about 11 to 15 seats. Planning staff gave us 13 recommendations based on different community groups, key community representatives that we were hoping to identify for the new committee. Additionally, Commission members are asked to send their top five candidates to the deputy clerk. And the clerk's office will schedule 18 interviews for the morning of August 5th. Does that work for everybody? It's kind of our tentative plan before, but just in case anything's changed. All right. Well, Sarah, if you don't mind keeping that on deck and we'll be ready for it. Everyone send your recommendations to Sarah if you haven't already. Gillian, good? Awesome. July 15th, board appointments. Only board appointments we have are the committee that Commissioner Wrightsides and I sit on for Early Childhood Education and Development.
And Commissioner Jennifer says I'm at board.
I am so sorry, Commissioner Horton.
Thank you.
Please accept my apologies. Commissioner Horton, our newest member, I'm excited to have on, on the committee with us. We're going to do some good work this year. Two reappointments, both of whom have served distinguently so far. So unless anyone objects, I'd love a motion to reappoint these two.
Yes, Stone and Heather Sangze, did I pronounce that right?
I think that works.
Okay.
We get a second?
Second.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Wall. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Anyone marginally indifferent? Perfect. All right, we will move to the next one. Maya, Heather, thank you for serving. Look forward to serving a full term with both of you again. Any other things that we need to wrap up before I issue some announcements, board updates? The next briefing will, and regular meeting will be held on August 5th, starting at 3:00 PM. The board will hold interviews for the Swananoa Steering Committee, as stated earlier, the morning of August 5th. Kurt, is there any need for a closed session?
It's not.
I heard Al sigh visibly at that one, so thank you for keeping us happy.
Sorry, I didn't mean to delay that now. We do not need a closed session tonight. Thank you.
Excellent. Well, I'll go ahead and entertain a motion to adjourn.
So Commissioner, I would say that on the next meeting, August 5th, we are looking at doing a board retreat earlier that, just before briefing. So maybe around two or so, we'd like to start.
So just an hour early?
Yes, just an hour earlier, so.
Okay, so everyone just kind of block off the entirety of August 5th, I guess, because we have the morning interviews, so.
And I think you have affordable, and affordable.
If we have early childhood, I don't know that we can do that. It'll be cutting it really close, but we'll have to cut off at exactly 1:30.
And affordable housing.
At one, so there, so you get done at three or you get done at two?
Depends on the agenda.
So the agenda will be an hour?
Yeah, we, yeah, usually we could make this one an hour for sure, yeah. May I ask, for what purpose?
So the board retreat is to talk, start thinking about strategic, the strategic plan for next year. This was something that we said we'll bring back to you then. But beyond that, we also want to do a little bit of debrief on the budget session for this current year and look at some of the things that we did move off the list that we need to start thinking about as we go into the next strategic planning session. So even if it's 2:30 versus 3 o'clock, that would give us some time. No, I mean, we'll start at 2:30 instead of 3, if that's possible.
I feel confident affordable housing can get out within the hour between 1 and 2.
And we would make sure we provide lunch or something, since you're going to have interviews and all the different meetings to make sure you have lunch that day.
I will, yeah, I'll get us there at 2:30. Avril, I can't promise that you're not going to have grumpy Commissioners, but we'll be there.
We'll bring you lots of sugar.
Thank you. Anything else before we entertain the motion to adjourn? I think I heard it from Commissioner Wrightsides. Can I get a second?
Second.
All right, thank you. Any discussion? All right, if not, all in favor of adjourned?
Aye.
Any opposed? See you August 5th.